With the flag. Flag allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All come all. Approval of the bills. Is there any questions on the bills? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Questions were asked, so I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
I abstain from that.
Okay.
I second. I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Motion to accept those meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the August meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I have two.
Mayor's report. Uh, the grants, uh, we're awaiting notification. We know that we submitted the park grant to the Bella Associates. And we should hear back on that, uh, in January. To see if we were awarded the grant, so. Uh, another clean energy communities, an aceric grant, uh, that was a grant of ten thousand dollars, which was going to be used for a car charging station. And that's, uh, under our old business, so I'll wait until we get to that to cover that. Fast New York grant. We're still waiting finally termination from New York State. Uh, that's the grant for the electric infrastructure, for the improvements up at the, uh, Apple Tree Industrial Park. So we're waiting, uh, word on that. Uh, the Tree and Park Committee, we did meet on September fourth. Uh, we discussed the large success of the summer concerts, new lighting around the walking trail, which we started to lay out today, myself, Courtney and Renee were there. And, uh, Todd was with us also. And we, uh, mapped that out in the park, uh, and the guy's gonna start excavating to bury the underground electric, uh, next week.
This is for the new Oxbow?
No, it's in the park, it's just for the underground electric. We're eliminating a lot of the overhead.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay. Uh, we have Joel Shepherd, uh, Department of Transportation is scheduling a meeting with local officials, um, Joel's involved in that also. Uh, the DOT wants to replace the bridge on Route nineteen, North Lake Road. And they're sending up a, a joint meeting with, uh, I know the towns involved, the village, uh, the superintendent of public, or of, uh, the school, uh, I don't know who else was in on that, but the fire department, right, the chief, because it's gonna impact a lot of different.
Is that the bridge that's just past the Alpaca farm there?
Yes. Yes. Uh, they wanna schedule that to be closed, uh, spring of twenty twenty-six, uh, to begin construction and, uh, it would be closed until the fall of twenty twenty-six.
Well, it's gonna impact some traffic.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll be setting up detours throughout the town to reroute traffic. So, good luck.
Just gotta suffer school buses too, they gotta change their whole route.
Yeah.
So they'll do a little temporary work around?
No. No. And hopefully their timeframe is somewhat accurate, cause a lot of times, you know, delays. So, so we'll be having a meeting to discuss that. And, uh, you know, as we get more information, we'll pass that along. Uh, I attended FEMA's Genesee County Flood, Flood Study, uh, yesterday in Batavia, was at the City Hall in Batavia. And FEMA was there and the DEC was there. And they're identifying properties in all the municipalities that lie in a flood zone. Uh, evidently, uh, someone's going like for a bank mortgage, uh, if they're in that zone, then they're gonna have, be forced to buy the flood insurance. So, we have some properties in our village that are on the list, so we're, uh, identify those properties.
That's only if somebody buys it again. No, right now their grandfather, they don't have to get flood insurance. If they go, if they sell it, the new mortgagees have to get flood insurance.
Correct. Yeah.
Wow.
Um, I will be attending the Municipal Electric Utilities Association, otherwise known as MEUA, uh, the annual conference is in Canadabo, along with the New York Municipal Power Association, known as NMPA. And they're having their semi-annual the day after the annual MEUA, so I'll be there for all those meetings. And, uh, I will come back with a full report on what's going on, what lies ahead in, uh, the electric industry here and how it's gonna impact the village as far as, you know, short term, long term, uh, there are rates, uh, the NMPA, they buy our supplemental power for us, they're a broker, they buy, there's probably thirty-seven systems in the state that they purchase power on our, on our behalfs. So because we're part of the organization there, you know, our strength is in numbers and you can buy, you know, get better prices when you're out to buy bulk power. So we've been a member of that for a lot of years, so they do a good job for us. And again, their semi-annual meeting is in Canadabo, so I will give you a report on that when I get to the next meeting. Uh, we know Sue Coke was here the last couple of days, uh, they micro paved Buffalo Street, McKenzie and Clinton, so those streets have been done, so they're in great shape now.
It looks like black tie. It's amazing.
Yeah.
Yes, it looks like they laid down.
Yeah, it's a lot of hand in.
Any, any issues with, uh, residents needing access?
No, I went door to door, I went to every house.
It went smoothly this year.
Yes. I put tags on every house, front door, back door. And, uh, Courtney, can you make sure if we had any problems? Nobody?
Not really. No, there's a few people called, but not nobody who had any real issues.
Luckily, the weather held out and they were able to do it on a day as they said because they didn't get rain delays, so it worked out much, yes, much smoother than, than last year.
Yeah, the, uh, end of the waste management was really, uh, helpful. They came, uh, cause Tuesday was garbage day, so they came early and did, uh, Buffalo and, and, um, McKenzie early, the first, so they could get it done before nine o'clock before, um, but, um, Joe and, and, um, Eric went around and did the recyclables, cause they couldn't get the recyclable truck here soon enough.
Do it all. New job.
Yeah.
My new colleague.
Everybody got Bob's guide, so.
Okay, I wanna give, uh, thanks to the Village of Spencerport. Their electric department was here for mutual aid to assist our crew. We set a new pole up on the cell tower hill. And if you were to see that hill, it's, it's, it's like that, and they had to set a pole, so they, they brought their, uh, it's a track machine that can set a pole.
Look up behind safety zone, right?
Yeah, up on the hill and, uh, dangerous, you know, but, uh, we couldn't use our truck to do it, so they, they had a special piece of equipment that they could use to do it, and they came with that and, uh, assisted us with neutral aid, so we helped them, they helped us. That's how we all get by, right?
Cause our truck doesn't have tracks.
No. Yeah. Uh, and thanks to the Village of Churchill, they went around prior to our roads being micro paved and, uh, streets, with their street sweeper. So I wanna say thank you to the Village of Churchill, also for their mutual aid. And we're awaiting the start of the sidewalk replacements to repair the broken or trip hazard tiles, uh, I think he said October, I think he said the third week of October they would be doing those, so, um, we'll get those done through the show. So, that's all I have. Courtney, what do you got?
Um, you know how I reported? I'm sure you read it, just a few things I wanna touch on. Um, first of all, we have great news. Um, Eric McCrain took his two A license exam today and he passed, so he's now officially licensed, so I congratulate him.
That's you.
Very, very good. And, uh, Chris is gonna take his soon, so hopefully we have even more good news.
For two A licenses?
Uh, he can operate to a plant. Um, so, our plant's a three A, I'm not sure why, you know, the designations, but our plant's a three A plant, so we need a operator who has a three A license, uh, so that's what Chris is going for. But the backup can be one less, so it can be two A, uh, so, so he can be the backup now. And then we'll have him start going through the process of getting, taking those three A tests too. Last meeting, we talked about the, uh, Digger Derrick and the Jetter being, being at, at the auction, and we were worried about it going for really, really low. Um, so we went, at that time, I think it was like seven thousand dollars, it jumped up to, I think, eighteen thousand, which actually sold for. Um, but there's a part of, in, in the program where you, if it's not as high as you want it to be, you can go back and, and make a non-counter offer. So Joe suggested that we, uh, go back and ask them to pay twenty, and they accepted that, uh, that amount and, uh, so we got, so we got twenty for Digger. That was good. And then Jetter, which, I mean, I didn't, I can't believe anybody even wanted it, uh, they went for two thousand three fifty and they were very excited about it, so, um, meanwhile, they both went for, uh, what we hoped for or want, so it's good.
Who's saying let me go, Courtney?
Um, it goes, um, so the Derrick, they go into the funds they're purchased out of.
Okay. Our equipment fund that we just did, or, or back into?
It'll go in, it'll, yeah, it'll go, so, in, in the budgets, there's a line for, uh, sales of equipment.
Okay.
So, and, and, so, yeah.
It'll go in?
So, yeah. So, and then the sewer will go into the, that line, and the sewer and the electric will go in, sales of equipment, line of electric. And then, uh, lastly, the last day to pay taxes, uh, property taxes, August thirty-first, after that it goes to the county. Uh, we're doing really, really well, uh, we're about ninety-nine percent. We only have seven thousand one forty-three thirty-nine to collect, but somebody paid this afternoon, um, so that I dropped that down, I think it was like nine hundred dollars they paid, so, yeah, so we're getting, uh, down really, really good.
That's typical.
Um, so, when we send it to the county, we send it not only taxes, but, um, sewer years, uh, so it kinda gets a little bit, but, uh, with all those, with all that, it, it depends on the year, who pays and what happens, but, um, five, six thousand dollars for, for property taxes.
Sure.
And it's almost always the same places, same properties. So that's all I have. Well, it just, I, I don't know if anybody's interested in taking a CPR class, but you might last, no bullet there, um, if you're interested in, uh, taking a first aid CPR course, uh, let me know, and I can add you to the list for that.
Sign me up.
Okay.
I haven't done it since coming.
We can talk, our group needs to do it too.
Okay.
What's that?
We'll talk, our group needs to do it.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna make a little bit of class, so if you did last time.
Do you have the blended class where you do a bunch online and then only do the skills, training?
That's, and Barb set it up, we did it here.
Yeah, okay.
And you're looking at that.
Yeah, so it's, it's like.
Have a program.
It's like five hours or something like that, if you do the whole thing in person, or you do the online stuff and then do an hour and a half in person, so.
That was twelve years ago, that.
Yeah, so. Okay, so we'll talk about that, then, then I'll do it together.
Did Gary give you a?
We did not.
Zero, okay, so we don't wanna CEO zero report, so.
You wanna, you wanna jump right to, and then come back to trustee concerns, or, I didn't take a lot of the trustee concerns, but.
Uh, is there a motion to accept the officers' reports?
How many can motion to accept the officers' reports?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, trusty concerns, or is that you have anything?
Uh, I was curious about when the sidewalks got selected. Were there quotes on that? I didn't remember if we reviewed that or not.
Yeah, we have quotes.
Yeah.
We did review that.
Yeah.
Um, and then, I was hoping you were gonna give me last. Uh, I saw in some of the emails that we got, um, information about refugee settlements, so I wondered if that's affected our village at all. There been, no?
First I heard of that.
No?
Was that from?
From the migrant, from migrants inhabiting properties, or, we haven't had anything like that.
Mine?
No concerns. Uh, still asking about the new speed control numbers, how's that going?
I'm meeting with, uh, Dan Staley. Uh, I'm gonna, what I'd like to propose to him, again, he wanted us to take the other ones down, I'm gonna propose, if they'll go for it, uh, if they'll give us a year, so that we could put the new ones to replace those in our next budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm gonna see if they'll go for that.
So you raise time for what we have and then switch?
Yeah, be able to put these up now, and within a year I could write something in writing saying, hey, the village is raising, within one year, that would put us in the next budget where we could, you know, budget for.
That makes sense.
See if they'll, they'll go for that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
My question was very similar to what Bob asked, so I answered my question.
Yeah, okay. All right, on our new business, our road program presentation, the floor is yours.
So, basically, what, oh, my name is Jake Vaxwell, and over the summer I was intern over at the Town of Virgin, and introduced by Cornell Camp Program, which is the local roads program. And basically, the whole, like, summarize of the local, local road program is, is you take college interns and then you place them into the local municipalities where they're from, with all over New York State, it could be Ethica, Utica, Rochester, as you can see, over here at Town of Virgin. And the whole point of this is to allow for these interns to aid the highway superintents allocate their, like, town budgets into the roads more efficiently, so that they're able to, so that they're able, so they're able to maintain the roads more efficiently. And, uh, that's basically what the whole program is about. And at the start, the intern is to get through, from what I experienced, like, a whole, like, day's worth of presentations, what the program is about, what they're looking for, like, when they're out surveying the roads, creating the cracks, and how different repair types, and how they're able to take these cracks and stuff that they're seeing in the road, and how their, these repairs will be able to maintain these roads into the future. So, what the intern is doing is, first, at first, they take, um, inventory of all the roads in Town of Virgin and, uh, Village, and then they're put, implement it into the camp program, and they put the length of the road, the width, I mean, the length of it, the, whether it's, how busy it is, and, and stuff like that. And then afterwards, the intern goes out and, out in person and surveys the road, walks up and down the road. So what I did is walk all, all around the roads in the village, and then taking out, and I take, oh, it's over here, we can just play it later, but, then taking like, um, we can just take what's here right now, so it makes more sense. Those would be all the page seven. And basically, what I'm, what I did is, I laid all the top information, and then I go through each, each category, which is longitude and traverse cracking, and then, with the naked eye, I see, and, I don't know, like, what, what I believe is true, because, um, even people have, like, different biases towards the extent and severity of the roads, so what I did is measure whether it's low severity or, like, to the extent, low extent. And then I filled all these out, alligator cracking, edge cracking, potholes, et cetera. And then afterwards, I would go, and basically, in the next page, we'll go to the next page. I could take all the information I, I get from in the field, I implement it into the camp program, and this is basically an example of what the camp program looks like, like, through a computer, and then you basically just take what you got from the survey and then you implement it to the program, and then it will just, like, do its own thing, and then on the next page, it gives, uh, these are different types of repair options that the local, the camp program gives us. So as you can see, there's, like, do nothing, which is, like, basically, you just literally do nothing, and then you go down the list, and there's different crack repairs, patch mill, some permanent patch, chip seal, like, all the basics, but this is what it has offered. And with the camp program sort of lagged, but we had to, like, go in and, like, input our, was like the cost size, which is, I'm pretty sure you're using this camp program since, like, early two thousands, twenty, like, eleven or something like that too, so, like, nowadays, these costs are more expensive and not as cheap as it was back then. So we had to, like, go in and manually adjust the different types of costs based on, um, the receipts that we got from different projects. And afterwards, afterwards, it gives us, it's, we plug it in and then it spits out all the different sets of fire, the fire group program that camp suggests that we, that Town of Village British should do. And I believe that should be, on, yeah, it should be on page fourteen, but, I mean, we could just go through all the pages, guys, and, so basically on page seven, this is what the ideal road looks like, I believe this is around the Decoy Site area, it's like, on Buffalo Street, where, literally that, like, intersection, I forgot.
That will be coordinated.
Yeah. And this is what the ideal road should look like, and you can see it's, you can see no visible cracks, no, like, nothing at all, like, it's a very smooth road, and it's what the ideal road should be. And on the next page, this is different type of cracking, like, overall cracking, which is like travers, the longitude, you know, as you see, it's starting to for, form sort of like a pothole, as you can see, like, where, like, the little, like, dog of a asshole is forming, that's where a pothole will basically start to form, and if it doesn't get treated, like, not like right away, like, right away, it will, like, start forming into a bigger pothole, and it becomes a bigger pothole over time.
So is page fourteen, is that a prioritized list, or do you have, don't have a prioritized list? Like, where, where do you put your efforts first? You know what I mean? Which ones are worse than others?
Oh, um.
That is page fourteen.
Page fourteen, so, so that's where you start at the top and, and these are the worst working out?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can just.
Courtney's, Courtney's sap of the intern and prioritize the roads is what you as a village prioritize on as high priority, and brings it down, that put, that enters into the system.
So, I was worried if you go over page fourteen. So this is like the final, fire program that the camp spits out, the road corner spits out. So you can see, it lists very first for, like, twenty, for next year, it lists out all these different types of roads that are, that are listed, and some of them you can do nothing, that is surveying, digging, or literally no, different types of cracking where they're visible, so do nothing. For Spring Street, there's repairs shoulder, and it gives you, like, the approximate repair cost, and it's not, and it only includes what you should do to maintain the road. And I should mark a point that this is what it suggested you, like, have to do this, like, quarter forward, for being them.
So in regards to Spring Street, your, your repair costs, are you estimating that eight hundred and eighty dollars, is that how I'm reading that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's for just repairing it, and this doesn't count for the main work, all that. That's, yeah, that gives you, like, the basic understanding of what should be suggested do for the next year. And based on the camp, it only gives us, um, approximately two-year apart, only should, all of these works should be done within two years, based on the budget that the village has. And I was fortunate to know that some streets, like, repeat because they come to intersection, because sometimes, like, when repairing a road, you come to intersection and you see where, within the intersection, that part of intersection is, like, not, is very, like, good, and you can just get that part and then work into other intersection from the other road.
And they break it into those, into those also, so that those intersections don't get triple counted in every intersection. Otherwise, the lengths will all get skewed for, they count the same intersection every time.
That's overall, like, the fire permanent, or the two-year permanent is for village. If you have any questions, if there anything that wasn't getting clear, I can just clear up for you guys.
Do you kind of crack, repairs, is that basically a crack sealer? Where they go on, fill, fill the cracks with sealer?
I believe so, that's what it is. Black snout stuff that goes in.
Yeah. Go around with the lines.
It was our today's class, cause we did, we did the, each one of the cost, we were done, we got them from the estimates and the, we ran them through the numbers. You get as close as we possibly can, obviously twenty twenty-five, I'll change them completely.
And then the micro paving is what we just?
Just did.
Buffalo Street.
That you guys just completed. And those numbers can't be any closer, cause we just did our micro pave, so, those are spot on.
And what's a semi-permanent patch?
That's where. That was a little bit harder to, it's, we call it, in the town, we call it shimmy, we use a grader, we'll use blacktop to glue the edges back together, or either it's starting to break off, or there's other fashions of doing it, you can cut, soft cut, and fill those broken areas, it's kind of a preference on how we, they did it on Buffalo Street, they repaired the edge, they soft cut it, they took out the head and put a patch in it, they micro paved over it, that what we said on a permanent engine, that's just a temporary fix.
The Church Street, the Church Street one, worth, you know, bottom third, that's a little off. Church Street, from, uh, name Church Street, from, from Gates to the Dead End, point one, six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
That was for?
Uh, On Church Street from Gates to Dead End?
But what, what service treatment?
Micro paving.
Micro paving. So point one, yeah, but this, definitely the computer system definitely doesn't bring them in perfect. That was the number that, that computer program put out.
Yeah.
Did you have to add all the church streets together? I believe there's more than one on that three.
Yeah.
Each one's broke down in its own section between intersections.
Like you said earlier, some of these are already done now with what we just did.
You actually completed a lion's share of your?
It's just good.
Or, in twenty twenty-four?
Oh.
And, um, so point two is the, they gave me the program, so the program we have in front two here, uh, I have the program, and I'll have to have Joel show me how to update.
We'll work together.
Yeah.
On the surveys, now you have a platform to continue to put it into, to keep the min, these are all minimum maintenance things, too. The point of the program was to keep a good road good, not wait for them to fall off that curve in this earlier chart, just let them fall into that, right, the one, two dollar a square repair cost, and let them drop off that curve, and you start getting the five, six dollar a square foot repairs, much more reconstruction is not cheap.
So like on McKenzie Street where it is suggesting a repair type of a semi-permanent patch, but we just did a micro paving, is that like one step up?
We did, and you actually, when they. Hey, actually, well, a step above what the program would per se to keep a good road good. And we, we've adjusted some of our program outputs too, to always, if we can afford to go a step above what the minimum of the program is, so that we're always ahead of that curve. We want to be well above that curve as much as possible.
So as far as we're concerned, it's just for observation only, it's, it's a result.
It's a budgetary tool for looking ahead when you start really looking at some of the major reconstruction projects you're gonna be facing down the road. And the program also does not take into account for other things that come out of that bud, same budget area. Like our, our road repairs, we have other stuff that comes out of there. So some of those numbers are not accurate because we can't spend all our money just repairing or we have other things we have to do, culprits, and other set repairs that come up throughout the year. So those are guidelines, this is more of a guideline, a tool to continue to update. The program works best, obviously, if you update it and continue to use the program.
So when would be the next time we would want to have the program run again?
Courtney, Courtney could physically do these surveys on a yearly basis and put them into the computer program to keep it current, or you can go on a two year, three year, I'm gonna do every other year basis for myself. Is how I'm gonna run it.
I mean, if we have this done in twenty twenty four, it has suggestions for twenty five and twenty six and we follow through with them. Does that mean we then skip a year or how long do these repairs hold you?
You would hope to always be reevaluating your roads regularly and then re-putting in your information and seeing how you're holding up to your repairs, whether you need to up them or just keep them stagnant, continue to hold them on.
So if that's a priority list, we may get in the budget, we may get halfway down that money wise and then have to defer to the next year, so.
And things are gonna get worse in that following year.
Right.
The road is always gonna continue.
Take it every other, every other year.
And your chips money changes constantly as you're all over where.
So yeah, and I was noticing.
Where you can spend that said money, that's a huge factor to me.
So if we, if you're waiting some certain time period beyond, then instead of where it shows, instead of a one dollar repair cost, it goes up to four or five, so we just try to balance that out?
Yeah, you're trying to minimize that four or five dollars as much as you, as much as will allow you to do.
No, I think we're in the main road, great tree, looking at what.
Historically, the village and the town, we're, we've been in the upper half of that curve for many, many years. It's just been a lot of proactive work to keep it there, spend the money now. Do the minimal repairs, it's a lot cheaper to do minimums.
No, this is great, and next budget, we can look at this and.
Yeah.
Use it, you know.
Good job.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jake, thank you so much.
And Jake, were you the one that did, did the whole review?
Yeah.
Wow, thank you very much.
You gonna move to Berch now?
How you gonna make reviews?
The house, right?
Okay. All right, thanks, thanks again. Uh, next thing is our resolution number seven of twenty twenty four, it's a speed limit reduction. Uh, you all have the resolution in front of you. This is to reduce the speed up at the intersection nineteen and thirty three down to forty five mile. Currently it's fifty five and we'd like to see it lower to forty five. And I feel it's dangerous up there, uh, people blasting through the light. And now with Oxbow gonna be going up there, you're looking at roughly another couple hundred cars a day. Dollar General's gonna be going in there and the industrial park also.
Does that need to be stipulated to forty five? Cause I don't see it.
Yeah, I was wondering that.
Yeah, so I see fifty five now, I don't see it, because I was wondering what we were gonna ask for a production too.
Is it for them to review and they decide what it should be? So do they like study?
Uh, I believe that town would like to be forty five.
I don't know if they put that in their resolution.
No? I haven't seen theirs.
So I actually left that forty five out because I was hoping for lower.
Yeah, I was wanting.
I didn't want to come and say, hey, we want forty five, when maybe they give down thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
What did they say, fifty?
Where are they, where are they proposing that that starts and ends?
Right, where's the start and end of that?
Does it start prior to the intersection of thirty three and continue to the on ramp so the expressway at forty five? Or is that yet to be determined?
That, right, it'd all come from the state, you know, this is just.
So they come out and do a study of it and determine what it should be based on traffic and do all those things about it?
Yeah, the rubber.
They have like motion monitors, they don't use those as much anymore. They have uh, eyes that are on to, but, yeah.
We lost our four lane in the last.
Right, that, that did help, that did help with the, they, by repainting that, making it two lane, it did help a little bit. A decrease in speed would be a huge help.
It's hard getting off a thirty, all the off Buffalo Road and there to turn left on thirty three, sort of gun in it.
If you're on Apple Tree and coming across.
Right, same there.
The Oxbow or you have the uh, delivery pumps and come to places, you're trying to left off of Apple Tree too, so.
Yeah, but the worst thing is when they come off the expressway with their blinker on and blinker doesn't go off. And when you're on Apple Tree and you think they're gonna be turning.
So where does this go then next, after approval?
Uh, this would go to Steve Holly's office.
Okay.
And to the DOT.
Okay.
Send it to, in the bottom of states, you know, DOT, Gensy County, Steve Holly and George Barello.
Okay.
And any other people we think might help us out.
I'm just wondering if we want to put a number on that for, I don't think they'll go for thirty because it's not within the village. But forty, forty five, I don't know.
So that, when you mentioned that it got reduced from the four lane, that was because they did a study for some other reason?
They asked for a reduction once.
We requested that too.
I think the town already requested the forty five, oh, yeah, leave at the last board meeting.
That's what I was told.
So we asked for a reduction in speed and they just changed the lanes? It didn't reduce.
They could do a number of things, they can do a traffic study and say you need a traffic circle. Another, you have DG, Oxbow, and a whole bunch of other things.
Yes, very true.
Or they could put a light, or they could put lights up too, right?
They could put lights up, which was logical.
Right.
So you're gonna get a traffic circle because logic is the city, so.
Are we okay with leaving it open ended then on the low side instead of offering a speed limit?
I am.
Okay, yeah, that's okay. So you need approval then for this?
Yeah, I need a motion to accept the resolution.
Accept resolution number seven for a speed limitation reduction on Route thirty three.
Is there a second?
Second then.
All those in favor?
Opposed?
Curated?
That's a good thing.
Next one's an easy one, resolution number eight of twenty twenty four. It's the MEA delegate resolution, which gives me the, when I'm at the annual conference, the ability to vote on behalf of the village. If I don't think it comes up for a vote at that, at that annual conference.
I'll make a motion to, does it paint show, for the MEA annual meeting, uh, of resolution eight of twenty twenty four?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, the tour of the DPW, we can do that, we, we close, okay, like we did the tour of the substations.
So where are we, where are we gonna go?
Uh, we'd just be up to the Quonset, that's where our DPW is housed and.
Yeah, I think.
I have to swing around eight or so, so.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be quick.
All right, good. And we're gonna do the sewage treatment next time then?
Yeah, weather permitting, yeah, we'll see what the weather's gonna be like a day ahead.
You seeing that?
Yeah.
We can, we talked about doing that in the afternoon, if you need to do that, I, I can, on certain days.
So he doesn't have to stay for all time?
It's up to all of you. Okay. Under old business, uh, we've got the quotes in for the painting of the building.
So the third quote came in less than the first two?
Uh, I did tell the, what do you recommend?
Oh, okay.
Uh, but they said they don't like doing, um, so, prevailing wage shots. I see they, they don't wanna work for the government.
Ah, okay.
Oh, and makes has to be prevailing wage.
Yes. So let's see what that. So seven thousand one ninety five seventy two for integrity, uh, seventy nine hundred for Stafford painters and seven thousand nine seventeen forty four for Bow. And I know that integrity is lost, uh, just I don't know much about them. And.
First, let's see if the board is interested in having this painted, you know, the job done. If they are, then we have to decide on who to.
Yeah, I thought we agreed that it should be done.
Yeah, it needs a.
Is there any reason other than not knowing this painter to not go with the lowest bid? It's like eight hundred dollars cheaper.
Just, just the overall experience, you know, of Stafford painters.
Have you had experience with that, Stafford?
I've seen their work and it's, it's phenomenal.
They just painted the gates up.
It's beautiful, isn't it? It's just beautiful, I mean.
Somebody else said integrity, I can't remember where, somebody else said integrity.
It's up the street here.
Okay.
It's women's old house.
Yeah.
There's a sign there, but they haven't started painting yet.
Okay.
I don't know, and um, they did, so for the mural, they put the, the base down, whatever you call it. I don't know, it was a bazer, and you know, and they sealed that brick up and then they put the base down and you can see how long, well, that lasted.
That was Stafford painters?
That was down, yeah. They, they really, they're the gold standard around the area for painters and, and whatnot. I don't know, I, 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 I know they will do a good job.
Well, they're also giving us the three year warranty where I don't think that one is, so it's something to consider too.
Yeah, that is true.
You can pull them up on Rochester Street also, it's beautiful. I mean, I remember, when they did it, I went by, I looked, I go, man, that is greatest paint job I've ever seen. When you can paint clapboards like that and make it look so fresh, it's just.
And also clean, everything was cleaned up and beautiful, like the whole, you know, sometimes people come in and paint and you see stuff, the roofing, it's immaculate after you're done.
You know, Gates's house is just beautiful, I mean, it's.
Oh, okay.
I think that's a, might be a big little cost for the three year though.
Oh, I see, that is ninety two hundred. Well, I think if you had experience with it, I'd go with it.
Is there any legalities to choosing one that isn't the lowest? Do they have the right to come back and question the board as to?
In some cases there are, but if the board establishes best value, then it's legal to resolve.
Is it worth asking them to come down on their quote?
Yeah, it's kind of.
Yeah, I don't know how that works with bid process, but I think that's where bid went.
Where, what budget is this coming out of?
General. General fund.
Can we cap it?
Question is though that at this point, it might be too late in the year, I don't know with their availability. Uh, so we might have to have it scheduled for the spring, which would be okay, it would still be the same, it would still be the same budget, but it would be, I'm not sure if they'd hold the prices until the spring.
We could see if they could hold the price.
I think they, if they can hold it for six, nine months, whatever.
If you could do it.
A little bit of that'll be out of their control, they can't control the cost of paint, but that's probably the lower of the cost. Labor is always the most expensive.
Well, as a steward of the taxpayers of Virgin, I, I vote for the lower bid of integrity, so that's, but listen to any other arguments. I think a established company like Stafford probably has more overhead costs. If they stick to the standard of the contract, what we're expecting them to do. That's it.
What was that, Tom?
No, I was just discussing with Bob the price between Stafford painters and Bolt Paint Company. I, I've known this young man since he was this big and uh, he's done a phenomenal job with his business. He's got great employees and every job that he's done, he gets rave reviews for his work and his work, act, work ethics. Um, so I, I think that, I think that's something to consider also. Uh, he's a young guy, he's hungry for, for business and he wants to do, make an impression, do a good job.
He's a local student graduate?
Yeah, he graduated, my son, and I think with Leah too, yeah.
So that's with Bow?
Yeah, Bolt Paint Company, there's very minimal difference between the Stafford and what he's, his quote is.
So like you're saying, go with the lower one for integrity?
It's, you know, our, my, you know, word to the village residences to look out for tax dollars and.
Right, yeah.
You know, I'm a steward of village taxpayers, so I, in my, when I vote, I'm gonna go for the lowest bid, but hold that contractor to the contract that they signed, so that's.
Did they say what kind of paint they were gonna use?
Sherwin-Williams.
Are they both Sherwin, are they putting Sherwin-Williams?
Yeah.
I do, I like your point with the three year.
You gotta pay extra.
You gotta pay extra.
No, it's not.
Right, so that's not.
So, okay.
Well, I guess the next question would be then is to, you know, talk to these folks and see if they'll honor this price for next year.
Who can do it, if anybody can do it this year.
And a lot of these guys are closing out their outside jobs right now and lining up inside work for the fall and winter, so.
So do we want to table until we get that?
Well, if you table, it's definitely not gonna get done this year.
Right, right.
And now there is a possibility it could get done this year.
Okay.
So.
I'm good with all of them, I really am, it's just, you know, as our role.
I'm in line with Mike.
Our role is to, you know, do a, if it's my house, I may make a different decision, but.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that. So, yeah, if you wanna make a motion, they would go with integrity?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept integrity's bid as the lowest bid for the village painting, um, as described.
It's providing they can get it done this fall or?
Right, and so either, either lock in price for next year or get it done this year at this price. But if they can't lock in.
They have to talk about it again.
Right, then I defer to Stafford, I guess, if they can lock in, I mean, that's, can we say it that way? I don't know. And, cause they're the next lowest, so I mean, we can go up.
If Stafford can lock it in.
Right, I'd start here and if they can, go there, lock it in, if they can, lock it in. So, but if none of them can lock it in, then, or do it this year, we have to do this next year.
Yeah, we'll just move it up to next year.
Right, 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 does that make sense?
Yes, so I second what Mike said.
Okay, all those in favor of having integrity be awarded the bid for painting of the Tully building here?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Is there a second?
Oh. Oh.
We already did first.
I did the most.
Yeah, I seconded.
Yeah.
I seconded.
You seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is there a color scheme picked up?
Not yet.
Okay.
I do have a preference. I really like how it looks a lot. I have the best of David too.
They, they just, you know, gave us links to have, there's something that Sherwin-Williams has specialties in that. For that.
Okay.
So everybody can, you know, come and give their input.
It looks good with the red panel, I guess.
Okay. The next thing we have. Is the Gibson Place, the lamp, or just at the last meeting, we went back there and looked at it. I'm like, you weren't here, right?
No, I've been up there.
You've seen it, yeah, and. Again, we, we really need this little piece of property. All these years, we thought it was village property and it's not. We use it for access to get to the side of our substation and behind the substation for maintenance. There's not enough room on the other side. Cause the mini creek is over there, so we can't get, get through there, so we really need that, that piece, you know?
Well, it's different than I thought it was. Cause we were, we were walking along here and I'm thinking it was like parallel to that, but that's, that's a pretty big size. That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Very good.
That's why they're breaking their car there, cause it's theirs.
It's theirs.
This would be the piece we're looking at, wanting.
Yep.
That, that's.
Like I said, all, we thought we owned all of this. Okay, so.
And this was, what did you say, four thousand?
Forty-five hundred.
That's what we paid for the other one, right? Across the street.
For a tiny little point two acre or whatever it is? It can be much cheaper than that though, with all the turning fees and everything, right?
Right, but that, that's just the price of purchase, the, the attorney's fees and, and whatnot on top of this. But also the survey and the subdivision.
Do they have to subdivide it?
Yes.
And then, is it their cost or our cost?
It'll be our cost.
Okay.
Okay.
And survey, our cost.
Any other?
I'm not feeling like we have a choice.
They're not gonna get, they'll get a free survey.
Right.
Yeah, we don't.
Because otherwise, how do you get that substation set up without?
You can't.
You just, you just pay for a survey and you bought the house. I've had it, um, full surveys.
Jeez.
He only, he's only had for, what? Four months.
My fourth purchase could be worth it.
Who does the subdivision go to? The planning board?
Yes.
Go to that?
Yeah.
So how long will this process take?
It'll take a, uh, it'll take a few months probably, at least. I mean, but I don't know how busy the surveyor is, but it'll be the first step. A lot of surveyor to that and that, with the planning board, sort of depending on when that comes in, probably has to go to two planning board meetings.
Okay.
And then.
We don't anticipate a problem with the planning board?
No.
Okay. You never know.
So I, you know, probably. Four.
Four months.
One, four months, five months, I think, kind of that timeframe.
Courtney and I met with the owner, so he's, he was good. Good. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion or no?
Yes, I need a motion to purchase that piece of property.
Is that number four Gibson Street, is that this?
Well, that's funny, that's a long story, but, yes.
No three.
From, but, well, it says two and four on the tax map, but the, their physical, the mailing address is one and three.
Okay.
It, it, it's.
So, so, alright, so we're purchasing from number two or number four?
Number three or four?
Purchasing.
Both, yeah, it's the same, it's all the same.
Is there a name then?
Yes.
I just wanna throw in.
Yes.
An identifier.
Patrick Carney.
So I make a motion, we purchase this plot from Patrick Carney on Gibson Place.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Curated? Okay, contact Tim Courtney, get the ball rolling.
Will do.
Okay. And.
We said that didn't need a public hearing, right?
No.
Right, no.
Okay.
And the next thing under old business is our charging station. The gentleman was here, he did his evaluation here and he gave us a quote, so you think y'all have a copy of that quote?
There's two in there. There's one for the lower grade one and one for the higher grade one.
And what's the difference between the two?
Uh, how fast they charge and how the amp's going to, to the charger.
I, I looked at the installation cost and it seems so high, but when I Googled it, it was right in line with what Google said for the installation.
But are we doing that ourselves or the installs?
So everything's there.
Can we do the installs?
Yes.
Does that mean a reduction in the price then? Or is that included?
That's, that's including everything. Really, all the power's there, everything's there, so we'll just take it off the concrete pad.
Yeah.
And put in one there and then hook it, and they'll hook it up on. Unless we go with the, the, the faster charger. And then that way, we're gonna have to switch the transformer, so there's more power going to it.
So let's recap.
Yeah.
Do these include us doing the work or not, these quotes? To install?
So there, we won't hook them up, we won't hook the wires up to the, so in that way, no. It's, so us not doing the work of hooking all up.
Somebody else will be doing that for these prices?
Yes.
So it's twenty-seven hundred for them to hook it up?
We can't subtract that out, saying, oh, well, we're gonna do that part.
Right, 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 I guess. But, but we, we might have to do additional work to get the electric there to prepare for them.
Yeah, and that's all our, yeah, that's all in our stuff, but that's not included in here.
Right.
I would foresee having to put a new transformer up because it's gonna take, I figured it out, it's gonna take a bigger KVA transformer on that pole.
Than what's there now, yeah?
Yeah, for the, for this level two, cause it's eighty amps on each, each side, so it's a hundred and sixty amps. So we're gonna need a bigger transformer than what's out there, but I would think we wanna go with the faster charger.
So did you say people log into an app and it pops up that they can stop here and then they sign in for certain entry? Or is it like pulling into a gas station and if it's open, it's open and if it's not, it's not?
Um, I, I know they, they pay through an app. Um, I'm not, I'm sure there's probably apps that tells you where their different ones are located. But when it pays, there's an app, you go and you pay through the app and it charges the car. And then the, the subscription that's, they talk about in there, they, they have the, they pay for the connection for the, like the internet, internet connection. So we don't have to worry about that and then pay for the credit card processing. So we set, we set what it costs to charge and then we charge it, you know, when twenty pays, it goes through the process. The company keeps, depending on, you know, something you say, seven and a half percent of the revenue and then we get a check for the rest.
So what's? Why is it in our best interest or not to get the faster charging one versus the slower charging one?
Uh, it, it just takes a lot of time to charge a car. Cars, for instance, if, you get, what, about forty miles off the charge? And, and then if it's empty and bring it back, it takes four, five hours to charge it up.
Wow.
So if, if somebody comes into town and they, they wanna charge and, you know, they'll wait around that long to charge up.
Right.
Yeah, cause it's, it, I mean, it's.
What's the difference in time? So what, how long does it take?
That I, I don't know, we didn't discuss.
These guys might know.
This makes no sense.
Don't know. Isn't your friend a hybrid?
And then, you mentioned that we're gonna be getting rid of ours, so we don't have to use that charge up.
Right.
Somehow pay for it. We have to pay that thing for the village one.
Right.
But they did tell me that they'll give us either a special key fob where you can hit it and it just causes it for free. Or you can set the computer up to not charge us.
Okay, that's good.
But in the meantime, yes, I, I think us getting a, a full hybrid, instead of, instead of a plug-in hybrid would be best.
Yeah.
At some point, so.
Yeah. So the difference between the faster one and the slower one is four thousand dollars?
Right. The other thing to consider in the, in the email is that we received ten thousand dollars from ICERTA. So I would, I would suggest going with that one because it's, it's better all the way around.
Is that money designated for stuff like this or can it be used for other things?
I mean, there's other things we can use it for, but we were approved to use it for charging stations. So, yeah, so my suggestion was either, you know, go with a twelve, we have the ten thousand from ICERTA, we have a better car charger and we're picking in, uh, two thousand and forty-three. Charging station.
Do we know what kind of warranty they come with? Cause I mean, we've got experience with these shit in the back.
Right.
If there's, what kind of warranty come with it?
It says three, uh, three-year warranty on cable, you know, on the quote.
Three years subscription. Why does it say a quantity of two for the firmware? I kept looking at, thinking of the two chargers.
It has, I think it's because it has two plugs.
Yeah.
The other, the other thought was to do two smaller, two stations, one here, one in.
Doesn't make a lot of sense.
No.
Yeah, so the ten thousand was approved for a car charging station.
That's great.
So.
And, and we're gonna get revenue.
That's right.
Right. Sound good.
And so there's two plugs, so two people could be charging at the same time?
Yes.
Oh, that makes sense then.
Okay, we handle the transformer change then? Yeah, we can do that in-house.
Yeah.
Our guys can do that. Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to accept the quote from Jacome LLC for the faster charging, charging station at twelve thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Alright. Very good. Privilege of the floor.
Just wanna see how you guys do business. You guys are great.
Well, you just stopped in.
Gonna see how it tastes a little bit more. I've got more time. I wanna get a little more.
Good. Great. It's good to have you here.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, thanks again for coming. Uh, I'm gonna have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sure, thank you.
So we're meeting up at the council?
Yeah, yeah, I've got the key.